Good evening, everyone. I will call our regular city council meeting to order, which is being held virtually via WebEx of February 23, 2021. If everyone can please put their camera on and unmute yourselves and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance
to the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, infinite, and just for all.
Thank you. The next item is our open forum, and I will pass it to Assistant Wen to let people know how they can participate in the open forum.
Thank you, Mayor. We encourage residents to participate in our open forum portion of the city council meetings. You can call directly and participate live, call 612-861-0651. You can also submit your comments ahead of time. You can call my desk phone at 612-861-9711, or you can email your comments to kwynn@richfieldmn.gov. And I currently do not have any callers on the line.
Thank you. We'll just wait a little bit here to make sure that no one is joining us for the open forum. Can you ask one more time, Assistant Wen, is there anybody who has called for the open forum?
I do not have anybody on the phone.
Thank you. Seeing as we have nobody here for the open forum, I will move us to the next item, which is the approval of the minutes of the joint Richfield Public School on the city council meeting of February 1, 2021, and the city council meeting of February 9, 2021.
Councilmember Supple, I'll move approval of those minutes.
Councilmember Wayland, I'll second.
Thank you. The minutes have been moved by Councilmember Supple and seconded by Councilmember Wayland. Analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
The minutes have been approved. The next item is the approval of our agenda.
Councilmember Wayland, I'll move to approve the agenda.
Thank you. The agenda has been approved by, or moved by, Councilmember Wayland and seconded by Councilmember Troutman. Analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
And Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda has been approved. The next item is the consent calendar, which will be read by City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved, and no further action is necessary. On tonight's consent calendar is Item A, consider the approval of setting a public hearing to be held on March 9, 2021 for the consideration of the issuance of a new on-sale wine and 3.2 malt liquor license from Moss Isley Cantina LLC, doing business as Sandy's Tavern, located at 6612 Penn Avenue South. Item B, consider the approval of a resolution for reimbursement of certain expenditures from the proceeds of general obligation grant anticipation bonds to be issued by the city for the 77th Street underpass improvement project. Item C, consider the approval of the sentencing-to-service program services agreement between Richfield and Hennepin County for calendar year 2021 through 2023. And I submit these items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar.
Thank you, City Manager. Would someone like to move the consent calendar?
Hayford O'Leary, move approval of the consent calendar.
Councilmember Supple, I'll second.
Thank you. The consent calendar has been moved by Councilmember Hayford O'Leary and seconded by Councilmember Supple. Are there any questions or comments from council on the consent calendar? All right. Analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The consent calendar has been approved. Item number four will go to Councilmember Supple.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item is a public hearing and then consideration of the adoption of a resolution specifying the use of funds from urban Hennepin County Community Development Block Grant allocation for 2021, and authorizing execution of a sub-recipient agreement with Hennepin County, and any acquired third-party agreements. So, community development block grants, or CDBG, funding is annually awarded to Hennepin County on a formula basis from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. The county, in turn, allocates a portion of these funds to the city of Richfield to address local needs relating to affordable housing, community development, and public services. Staff is proposing to use the city's 2021 direct allocation of $210,000 estimated as follows: $80,000 towards the deferred loan rehabilitation program for low-income homeowners to address maintenance needs, $50,000 to first-time homebuyer down payment assistance program, and $80,000 to single-family acquisition and rehabilitation. Each city in the Hennepin County CDBG program will set aside 15% of their allocation to fund public services that will be distributed through a single combined process covering all of the cities in the county CDBG program. For Richfield, the amount set aside for public services will be $37,100 estimated and is separated from the city's direct allocation. Does staff have anything they'd like to add to that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Supple, Julie Urban had popped off for a moment, but it looks like she's back. I don't have anything to add. I'm not sure if Ms. Urban does or not.
No, I don't, unless there are questions.
Then, at this point, I would like to open the public hearing. So, Executive Assistant Wen, can you tell us the process for people to call in for the public hearing?
Of course. Thank you, Councilmembers Supple. We always encourage residents to speak at our public hearings. You can participate live at our meetings by calling 612-861-0651, and you can be patched through to comment to our council. You can also provide your comments ahead of time by calling 612-861-9711. You can also email your comments to be read at 2kwynn@richfieldmn.gov. And I currently do not have anybody on the line.
Thank you so much, Executive Assistant Wen. While we're waiting to see if somebody wants to call in, there was an additional piece that the staff wanted to mention. That 15% that's set aside for public services, the staff would like to encourage eligible Richfield service providers to apply for that and to participate in the review of those funding proposals because we would like to be able to have some of our local service providers to take advantage of that funding. Has anyone called in? All right, then I would move to close the public hearing.
Councilmember Wayland, I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made to close the public hearing by Councilmember Supple and seconded by Councilmember Wayland. Analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The public hearing has been closed. Oh, sorry. Councilmember Supple, do you have your hand up?
I had a question, but do you want to wait until after we make the motion?
Yeah, let's do the motion, and then we can open it up.
All right, then I would move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the use of funds for the 2021 Urban Hennepin County Community Development Block Grant Program and authorizing execution of a sub-recipient agreement with Hennepin County and any required third-party agreements.
Councilmember Troutman, second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Councilmember Supple and seconded by Councilmember Troutman. Are there any questions or comments or discussion from council members? Councilmember Supple.
I just wanted one clarification. So, it's my understanding that as people pay loans off, that frees up more money. Is the $80,000 for the deferred loan program in addition to the money that's paid off so that more people would have opportunities to use this funding since there's a waiting list?
Mayor, members of the council, yes, you are right. Councilmember Supple, that we get repayments, and it's actually, we've had a significant amount of repayments the last couple of years. I think it was either $80,000 or $100,000 in repayment, so in addition to this out that is made available to folks for loans.
Other comments or questions from council members? Councilmember Troutman.
I just want to say thank you, as always, to staff, but particularly with these programs, these set of programs. You know, they look like lines on pages, but these are really transformative to a lot of families, to lower-income families that want to stay in their home. This money makes it possible for them to stay in their home and not see it go into disrepair, which, of course, is great for the community too, because it's great when your neighbor's home isn't going into disrepair, because especially when folks are on fixed incomes, and for folks that have rented in Richfield and want to own a home in Richfield, this makes that possible. And for homes that are in bad shape and falling into disrepair, this makes it possible for the city to refresh our housing stock. So, I just want to, just all those, all those things are great programs, and just really pleased to support this motion.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Councilmember Wayland.
I just want to echo that. I wanted to make sure others have covered it now, that we dug a little bit into what each of these programs do, and want to give an even bigger highlight to the down payment assistance program. I know that, I, or I think that's the newest of the three. I know it is relatively new, and that is a... I, you'll hear me talk all the time about pushing for more in the work we do on housing, and there's certainly, the needs are still there, but I think that these three programs are some of the really great things we are already doing, that we are one of very few local suburbs doing down payment assistance like this. And I would strongly encourage any Richfield folk looking to buy your first house, look into this program. You may not qualify based on income, but if you do, that it will certainly help you out a lot. It's a great program. So, thanks again to staff for this. And yeah, happy, happy to see these moving forward again.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Director Stark.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Wayland. I wanted to put a fire point on that thanks, because the CDBG program, in the grand scheme of things, it's not a huge amount of money, but it is federal money, which means that it is very difficult sometimes to work with, the rules, the strings. And in particular, our housing specialists, Kate Acheson and Celeste McDermott, on that program went through dozens of revisions to every single rule to make the folks at HUD satisfied with our process. And so, it is a lot of work that they put into this, and it is gratifying to see it, you know, resulting in families in our community, and that's, that's why they show up to work every day. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Stark. And I'll just add, I know many people come up to me personally or directly with each one of these programs, and they say, "Man, we love this program. We participated. We're beneficiary. We're so thankful." And it's, these programs are an example when people come to us and say how much they love Richfield and all the work the city of Richfield does, and how we go above and beyond. These programs are mentioned frequently for being some examples of of how they just are so thankful for what we're doing. And then we talk about helping assure that we have affordable housing in our community, and oftentimes, that is spoken about just within the scope of rental units, but we also go above and beyond, and these programs are an example of how we make sure that we're doing everything we can to help make homeownership a possibility and affordable as well, and looking at the various barriers, whether it is paying for your down payment or repairing that furnace that went out, or, you know, getting that property in your first home and updating the housing stock that we do have and making it affordable and accessible for folks. So, again, multiple programs that we are very proud of, and that staff does such a great job of leveraging the funding that we do have and finding ways to maximize the funding we have and using other opportunities to get more funding to support these programs. So, huge thanks to our staff from our residents as well. All right, any other comments? Okay, Analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved. Item five will go to Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a consideration for the approval of a second reading of an ordinance rezoning property at 6945 Penn Avenue South as Neighborhood Business C1. The property at 6945 Penn Avenue South is currently used as a dental clinic and its own single-family residential, or R. Since the business use predates the application of the current zoning designation, it's considered a legal non-conforming use and can therefore continue as is indefinitely. The 2020-40 Plan, or Comprehensive Plan, changed the designation of the subject site to the Community Commercial Plan Land Use category. The property owner is requesting to rezone the property to Neighborhood Business C1 to match both the current use and planned land use. Later this year, as a part of the implementation of the Comprehensive Plan, staff will be reviewing zoning designations to identify sites in need of rezoning to achieve agreement with future land use designations. Because the property owner would like to install a new sign that is only permitted under commercially zoned property, staff offered the property owner the option of bringing the rezoning forward now. And so, that's great to hear that staff is able to do that and bring, help bring properties around Richfield into conformity, but we're glad to have the second reading. So, I just turn it over to staff. Does staff have any additional comments?
I would just note that the, I believe the property owner is present at the meeting, if you would have any questions for him. And again, this is, this is kind of similar to what we just discussed in the work session, where because of, because of all the functions of the comp plan and the zoning on this property, and the fact that it's been used in this way for so long, that the discretionary role for the council isn't as great as it is on many of the decisions you might make.
Well, excellent. Well, Mr., is it Dr. O'Neill? Could you introduce yourself, and would you like to say a word?
I'm Jeff O'Neill, and the one guy I do know is John. I've seen him as a patient for years. And I don't really have much to say. It just caught me off guard when we found out that we were zoned residential. And it was basically a sign company checking to see if it could put a sign on the building. That's what it was. So, that's how I found out about it, and if you have any questions for me, that's about as far as I can go with it.
Well, once upon a time, about 25, 30 years ago, that's where, that's where I got all my dental work done as a child, so. So, glad, glad you're a part of the community. And, yeah, so I would, I would move the approval of a second reading of an ordinance that amends the Richfield Zoning Code Appendix 1 to change the zoning designation of the property at 6945 Penn Avenue South from single-family residential to Neighborhood Business C1.
Hayford O'Leary, second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Councilmember Troutman and seconded by Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Any questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
I just also wanted to thank the applicant for doing this, and to some extent, apologize or acknowledge. I hope we are able to get our designations updated fairly promptly, because I, I think it's, I'm glad that staff helped the applicant through this process, but hate having to make them do our work for us. It's kind of an unfair burden when, it's sort of an odd thing that we ever zoned this residential, but I certainly hope we're able to fix that and bring it into line with the comp plan so we don't make other people go through the step and waste staff time on these one-off reports.
And I would just add, I just appreciate you continuing to invest in Richfield and investing in a new sign as a part of that, so, so thank you.
And as John probably knows, we just did a major upgrade on the building too. So, we're invested in Richfield. We're gonna, we plan to stay in here for as long as I'm, as a career as a dentist. So, I enjoy the community, and it's been very good to meet.
Excellent.
I'd also just like to say thank you for being here with us tonight, and nice to meet you. And you have supportive council and staff here, so thank you for coming tonight. And I just want to add to the comment by Councilmember Hayford O'Leary around the mismatch of the designations. I know this is an issue that's come up in the past, and I think it's just kind of the mismatch in how things get updated, and that, you know, this is a pretty common issue. Is that correct, staff? I mean, I think it's just the nature of how a lot of these things end up getting updated.
Mayor, members of the council, yes, we're required by state statute to update our ordinances to comply with, to agree with the Comprehensive Plan. The Comprehensive Plan got its final approvals, and then COVID hit, and we were short-staffed. So, we are running behind on our alignment of the two plans, but we are, we're working toward it.
Thank you for that, and I appreciate all the work that our staff has been doing. I know, especially in community development, that's an area where work has continued on and at a huge, at a fast pace, and it hasn't slowed down. And that was, that was the case before COVID. It continued during COVID, and then you layer on the additional changes that you guys have had to do and quickly pivot because of COVID. I can, I imagine it is, it's been difficult, so thanks to our staff, and thank you for, to the applicant for being here. Any other comments from folks? All right, if we could go to Analyst Martinez Gavina to please take the roll call vote.
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is to consider the approval of agreement with nonprofit organizations to provide social services to the city of Richfield and authorize the city manager to execute agreements with those agencies. The 2021 city budget includes funding for organizations that provide social services that are deemed to be of benefit to the city and the community in general. The 2021 budget includes $70,480 for this purpose. In November 2020, staff distributed a request for proposals for social services to nonprofit agencies serving the city of Richfield for the services to be provided in this year. A total of eight proposals were received from the following agencies: The Headway Emotional Health, or the Storefront Group; Cornerstone Advocacy Services; The Family Partnership; Volunteers Enlisted to Assist People, or VEEP; Loaves and Fishes; Planned Parenthood; Senior Community Services; and MIRA. I'm not going to try and pronounce the Spanish. My Spanish is not that good. The proposals represent a wide variety of social services offered to Richfield residents, and the total requested amount was $135,269.50, exceeding the city's available funding by almost double. So, two Richfield residents, two staff members, and one council member comprise the committee that reviews these proposals and makes funding recommendations. They took into account the type of service or services to be provided, the target populations to be served, and past performances of the social service agencies. All 10 are, or all eight, I believe, are recommended for funding. There's detailed on what the funding levels are in the full agenda packet. But with that, I will, as well as also in the packet, if folks are interested, is more details on what services each group is providing. But with that, I'll pass it to staff if they have anything to add.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland, Madam Mayor. I would just add that the, many of the recipients, I believe, are in the meeting today, tonight. So, if you had questions for them or wanted to hear from them. And Julie Urban, the Housing and Redevelopment Manager, is really the lead staff person on this. So, with any, you know, specific or technical questions, I would just refer them to her. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I will make the motion. We can come back to comments and questions. But I will move that we approve the agreements between the recommended nonprofit organization and the city of Richfield and authorize the city manager to execute agreements for services with those agencies.
Councilmember Supple, I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Councilmember Wayland and seconded by Councilmember Supple. Any comments or questions from council members? Councilmember Supple.
I had the good fortune to sit on the review committee with the staff and the community members, and it was amazing reading about all the different programs and all the services, and to know all of the good work that was being done. I've seen some of this out in the community, and then I learned about that there was more of it going on, so I was really impressed with that. There were a lot of tough decisions because the requests far exceeded what we had for budget. So, I was really happy when I saw in the details of the staff report that since the funding has been flat for five years, that we're going to be evaluating funding for upcoming years as we go through the budget process. And I realized that most social service programs and grants come through the county, that the city has a small, small part, but I would like to see some kind of an inflationary increase. So, thank you to all those service providers, and thank you to the community members that... So thank you to all those service providers and thank you to the community members that sat in on that committee and helped with it and to the staff.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? I have a couple of comments. I see Lynette is on Lynette. It works at the city of Richfield. And Lynette, you lead this group and this work, right, on the staff side?
Yeah, yes, I do. So, yeah, I sit around and I get all of the information out and then gather it from the people who the agencies who are asking for it, and they always need more funding. And and sometimes our funding is a really big portion of what they receive. Sometimes the agencies are large and huge, but every little dollar we have and we can give away is is amazing. So I'd love to see if we could in increase that budget a bit more.
Absolutely. Thank you for reiterating that point, and thank you to councilmember Supple for making that point as well. And thank you, Lynette, for being such a great trusted partner to our community organizations, but also to our families who are most in need. You are somebody across our community that is just so well-respected and has been a foundation, you know, in in Richfield in that area of connecting people who are most in need and making sure that they have the housing that they need, the social services, the support, whether it's from the city or from our community partners. So we're very lucky to have you at the city. And to our community organizations that are here, I'll just say, I just have a strong belief that that Richfield as a city and Richfield as a community and our organizations are way underfunded and undersupervised because there's a lot of focus on Minneapolis and St. Paul. And there's a misunderstanding or a perception that isn't always correct about who lives in our suburbs and really not understanding that we have so many community members from diverse backgrounds, immigrants, refugees, seniors, people from all walks of life in Richfield and in so many suburban communities. And it is your organizations that oftentimes are the only organizations and the infrastructure providing support, and you all need much more support than than you're getting. And whatever I can do as mayor, but also this council to support you and advocating for additional resources to make the the point that, hey, we have amazing community members and we have great organizations in the suburbs and in Richfield, and we need you to to, you know, look at investing more in Richfield. I'd be happy to to write letters of support, to come and try to hustle over some funders or do whatever it is to make sure that you get the support you need. I just it's always something that I'm trying to advocate for is, hey, let's invest more in building the infrastructure and the community leadership in our suburbs because this is where a lot of our families live, and they're not getting the support that they need because we've just not had those investments. And I say that applies to the city of Richfield, but it also applies to your organizations. And if there's anything I can do also to support your participants, your members, the groups that you serve and come and say hi or say thank you to your staff. Obviously, before COVID, you were doing tremendous work, and now, like our staff, you're going above and beyond with little resources oftentimes to meet the needs of our residents during COVID. So thank you for your leadership and whatever we can do to help get you more money and support, we are here to do that. Other comments or questions from folks? Councilmember Troutman.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to greet Lynette and just say it's good to hear from you, even only virtually. And everything that our mayor says, of course, absolutely true. Just so grateful that year after year, you're just so effective and not just serving our community, but really establishing incredible systems that serve our community. And so I just want to recognize your your good work and appreciate your friendship and to all the all the nonprofit organizations. In addition to equating everything that our mayor said, for those that are watching this, if if you love our community and appreciate how vibrant it is and you have some excess capacity or you have a couple of dollars or you have a couple of hours that you can you can share, please consider these groups that are doing great work in our community and find an organization whose mission you really align with. And I would just just as much as we want to do, I just want to invite our citizens to do the same thing. And I know we're all we're all being stretched, but these are great organizations. And thanks for everybody who who's here on the line with us tonight.
Any other comments or questions? Right. Analyst Martinez-Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
I.
Councilmember Supple.
I.
Councilmember Troutman.
I.
Councilmember Haver O'Leary.
I.
Councilmember Wayland.
I.
We have five I's.
Motion has been approved, and thank you, everyone who was on the call for tonight's item. We appreciate you coming tonight and thanks for all you're doing for Richfield. The next item is our city manager's report, and now we'll go to city manager Roger. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a very brief report. And my report, my update on COVID is almost exactly what it was two weeks ago, and that is a good thing. We're continuing to see a downward trend in cases and hospitalizations. We also continue to work with both the Dyna, Bloomington, and Bloomington Public Health to build the infrastructure we're going to need as vaccinations ramp up. I also have an equity update tonight. Our Equity and Inclusion Administrator Bill Green has only been on the job like just days over a month, but he did want to make sure that he was celebrating Black History Month. Or the city is celebrating Black History Month. And he put together a program. It's a series of interviews and it's the focus is appreciate, celebrate, and educate, and it includes poetry and music and again, interviews with community leaders, including Dr. Joyce Marie, who is our co- but I I believe she's still co-chair, right, of the Richfield Arts Commission? And and our very own Mayor Reagan Gonzalez. So I encourage you, they are being released on our social media, so check it out on Facebook when you have a chance.
Thank you. Any comments or questions on the city manager's report? Okay, I will move to the next item, and that is claims and payroll. How about councilmember Troutman? You want to move claims and payroll?
I'd be honored. I move claims and payroll.
Councilmember Wayland, I'll second.
Thank you. Claims and payroll has been moved by councilmember Troutman and seconded by councilmember Wayland. Analyst Martinez-Gavina, could you please take a roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
I.
Councilmember Supple.
I.
Councilmember Troutman.
I.
Councilmember Haver O'Leary.
I.
Councilmember Wayland.
I.
We have five I's.
Thank you. Claims and payroll has been moved. All right, hats off to hometown hits. How about councilmember Supple?
Thank you. I'm going to do a repeat of the last time I did this because I talked about the Portland Avenue Legacy Project that's being put together by the Congress for New Urbanism. And they're looking to get ideas so that we could revitalize the area around Portland Avenue between American Boulevard and Seventy-seventh Street. So as the four ninety-four interchange and transit improvements are taking place, it's an opportunity to improve the appearance, safety, and vitality of those areas. And so this is a cooperative effort with the Congress of New Urbanism and the cities of Bloomington and Richfield. So you should have received, if you're in the area, a postcard that gives you details. And they're going to have the virtual kickoff tomorrow night at six P M. So you can sign in for that. And if you didn't get the postcard and you want to add to it, you can find it on the city website. So thank you to everybody that's involved with that. And the only other thing I wanted to do was say a big thank you to Public Works for all the help they did with people that had frozen pipes. So thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Supple. Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick hats off. There there's a lot happening at Wood Lake in the next in the next couple of weeks. There's a Wood Lake Luminary Stroll. So at night, you have to pre-register. So go to the city webpage and pre-register. But you can walk through Wood Lake at night. It's beautiful. They light the the pathway with candles and luminaries, and it's a great opportunity to be outside. There are always continuously opportunities to be outside with your kids. I know it's I'm maybe like the last person in the world to to learn about geocaching and what that is. But just an incredible opportunity to be out there with your with your kids or even young young at heart, and you just go and you hunt for for little little caches where you can write your name and say, I was here, and kids love it. You can there are geocaching opportunities at the park. And there's a book club. There's a Wood Lake Book Club, and our Parks and Rec staff is just constantly looking for ways to engage folks in the middle of this pandemic, and they're doing incredible work. And so coming up on March eighth, the book is The Home Place by J. Drew Lanham. And you can participate virtually and talk about nature and talk about a good book and and enjoy the company of your neighbors. So we're grateful for for this asset as a center for community life, and there are lots of opportunities to use that in the coming weeks.
Thank you. Councilmember Haver O'Leary.
I'm just going to mention, and I won't be I'm not taking this from councilmember Wayland because it is actually in his word, but this email that I received from Richard Public Schools Centennial Elementary Teacher highlighting, I I'm sure you all received it, but highlighting the impact, the positive impact of the new stop sign of Bloomington Avenue and Naginale Boulevard of simply making that crossing, although there was a crosswalk there before, having to make kids not fight with traffic to get across the street is really made a difference for them. So it was great to hear and that they are celebrating with the Winter Walking Day this Friday. So I think it's great that kids are continuing to walk in the winter and that the city and Public Works has made that a little bit safer.
Thank you. Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. My only one was to let folks know, I know we had a work session last month relating to the American Legion site that there is now. We're in phase two of the process with the moratorium. There is now a website that I believe was linked on the on the city's Facebook page and through the city website for that includes more details about the kind of feedback we're looking for, a chance to submit your own feedback in terms of just the surrounding areas that could potentially in the future be redeveloped, wanting to have some more clear guidelines of how those relate to the park, what people want to see. So if folks are interested in learning more and or sharing your input, feel free to check that out.
Thank you, councilmember Wayland. I'll just share, I have a couple items, but I just got a text from a resident who was saying that they're watching the city council meeting and because it's their Tuesday night bonding and drama session, their favorite drama show they like to watch. But they were saying how grateful they were for the down payment assistance program and that they were able to take advantage of the whole fifteen thousand dollars, which was great and that it made a huge difference to them and their family and that other programs like Minnesota Housing give a max of eight thousand dollars, but sometimes you may only qualify, not even for the whole eight thousand dollars, but just an appreciation. Again, like I said, there's a lot of residents that reach out to us, but I just got a text that saying that really does make a huge impact in people's lives. And I don't remember if I did this at the last meeting or not, but I'll do it again anyways. We got our awesome annual review, annual report and from the city of Richfield. And it's just so many heartwarming, awesome stories about the great ways we're working together to meet our most pressing needs of our residents, but also coming together to celebrate, to bring new amenities, to to lift up our leaders. There's just so many so many great things. So please take the time to read that. And then lastly, I just wanted to share a reflection. Councilmember Troutman and I are on the Policy Advisory Committee for the four ninety-four and thirty-five W Reconstruction and Update, and we've been on that for a couple of years now, and staff has been right by our side and just influencing that work. And I will say, I don't want Richfield to take all the credit, but there's a lot of credit that should be given to Richfield staff, community members, leaders who have really pushed hard in those projects. And in addition to our other partners, such as Commissioner Debbie Gottel, the county, the city of Bloomington, and other city partners, and really pushing hard and being very consistent in that push around making sure that we're centering community engagement and equity in that project. And I will tell you, there has been real impacts that have come out of that project like thinking about a pedestrian bridge and building into the plans a pedestrian bridge over Chicago Avenue because we pushed for a focus on equity, changing the first phase of focusing on everything west to the four ninety-four and thirty-five interchange as the first place to start and making sure we're also including improvements on the east side where we have a big focus on community members of color, renters, but also where there's so much congestion and traffic as well. We said, how could you start the project without looking at where the traffic congestion and impacts are strongest? The work that we've done to secure the funding for the underpass that if not, if we didn't receive that funding, we would have been blocking off a huge section of our city where we have just a diversity of incomes, a diversity of workers, of families, of cultural backgrounds. And so I just want to say thank you to councilmember Troutman, to our staff, to Commissioner Gottel and to everyone involved. That's a project that's done once every hundred years, and we've been able to really make tremendous generational impacts on equity because we've we've pushed hard. And councilmember Troutman sent me a really nice text to say, wow, this has been really great. We've really made some some substantial changes, and I just wanted to let others know about that work because it will make a huge, huge difference. And I think that is all I have, so I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.